Discussion and approval of the claims. Need a motion? I'll move it. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Human Resources, Mr. Gilliland. We need a motion to approve transaction of personnel.
I'll move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Goodness. Consideration and approval of appointments for the Community Action Agency Board of Directors, Jeanne Logan.
Hi.
Hi.
As some of you know, the Board of Supervisors appoints a third of my board as their representative, so public officials, every year. And so I have two of our current board members that are up for reappointment. One would be Bob Noler, who formerly was treasurer, and he's been a wonderful board member. And Tom Cooper, who was the principal at Woodbury Central.
Superintendent.
Superintendent, sorry. Thank you. And they're both willing to serve again. A new appointment would be Jody Sigler, under the category of welfare. She's a dental hygienist here in town. She served on the ICEVIO program for some of the counties in the rural area to the south of us, and I think she would be an excellent addition to the board. She wanted to come in person today and had a funeral to attend in Nebraska. Called me late this afternoon. She's not back. But if you would like to interview her, she said anytime you want to put her on the board, she'd like to come and meet you.
I would take a motion to approve the three appointees.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Here we go. We have a dilemma. We have five minutes, and then we have a set time. Let me jump. Let's do the County Weed Commissioner, Jared Jepson.
I get to be Jared today. Mark Narra, Woodbury County Engineer, and standing in for the Weed Commissioner today. What we have on the agenda today is the passage of the annual order for destruction of noxious weeds countywide. These are the typical weeds that we require to be killed each year. It notes that if people don't bring their properties in compliance, that the Weed Commissioner will go in and spray those and assess for it.
So we need a motion to kill weeds.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. While you're up here, let's start down your list. Consideration of permitting for work within the highway right-of-way for Kevin Heck.
Heck, yes. This is for a ditch cleanout along 310th Street to take drainage within Wolf Creek Drainage District East to Mobile Blacktop. I recommend approval.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Consideration of permits to work within the highway right-of-way for Fred Lee.
Lynn.
Fred Lynn, I think.
Lynn, excuse me.
That's an unusual spelling of Fred, I know, but we were informed we had it wrong. So we were thinking for the now.
Well, I got the first one right and the second one wrong.
That is the first time I've seen it spelled that way, and that is the correct spelling. This is for a cleanout in and around the ditch at his driveway. I recommend approval.
I'll move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Consideration of certificate of completion for maintenance gravel, stockpile, and gravel production at Peters Pit per contract for 2014?
This is the, we had a contract with Halate Materials to mine and process gravel for us at Peters Pit. Contract price was $187,500. Recommend approval.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, one more. Consideration of certificate of completion for maintenance gravel, stockpile contract 2014?
This was for delivery to our 11 stockpile sites countywide and processing the gravel from the Anthem Pit, which supplied much of the gravel for us this year.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. One more.
This next one is the, is made out to Josh Fest. Josh is the contractor for Mark Arho, or Chris Arhos, Arcos. He is the owner of the property at 1460 Emmett Avenue. He was doing work for the landowner, shaping the ditch, back slope and four slope. I did give administrative approval of this with the board coming in retroactively. They went out there and did the work without a permit. So this gave us an opportunity to educate a contractor and to make sure that the work was properly addressed. He had started to do some work where he narrowed up our shoulder to make the road mobile. We made sure that that was restored properly before, before the contractor moved off the scene.
What item are you on?
We went down to F.
G. We're on F?
Yes.
What happened to G?
E. Oh, I missed E, didn't I? I'm sorry. They were out of order in my booklet here. The next one is the consideration of permits to work in the right-of-way for Mike and Terry Pagan. This is for back slope shaping only. They won't be touching the ditch.
We still skipped E.
We need to be, E. E is consideration approval.
This is in E now. Oh, wait a minute. Consideration of approval of construction plans.
Runde Avenue.
I'm sorry.
Seventy-three ninety-seven.
Yes.
All right, let's just, let's hold that one because I got a time set now.
Yeah, I know you do. I was hustling.
All right, we're going back to item number eight. This would be a public hearing and sale of the property parcel 007080, also known as 312 West Sixth Street. We are in a public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against the sale of this property?
Mr. Chairman, hearing no. Want to move the hearing to be closed?
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, anyone interested in bidding on this property, please come forward. State your name.
Chandel Enly.
And your bid is?
Three fifty.
Three hundred and fifty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sir. Would you like to bid?
Yeah. My name is Silberio Palmeiras. I place a bid of four fifty.
Four fifty?
Five hundred.
Six hundred.
Six fifty.
Seven hundred.
Oh, I love it.
Seven fifty.
Thousand.
Thousand fifty.
Eleven hundred.
Eleven fifty.
Twelve.
Can you feel your taxes going down?
Twelve fifty.
Thirteen.
Thirteen fifty.
Forty.
Forty fifty.
Fifty.
Fifteen fifty.
Sixteen.
Sixteen fifty.
Seventeen.
Yeah, we're good.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Need a motion?
Move the bid of...
Seventeen hundred.
Mr. Palme, Palmeiras?
Palmeiras.
Palmeiras?
Yeah.
For seventeen hundred dollars, be accepted?
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Is there someone upstairs, or you're going to handle it? You can go right with her, and she'll take your money. All right, now, Simco. This project is one of those nonprofits that we funded with a match. I thought it would be good for us to, well, that was timely. We took Karen away, and Megan's operator left her.
I'm the housing manager with Simco, and I'm here today to present on our housing programs, specifically our Housing Trust Fund program that includes owner-occupied rehab. That program does an average of $7,500 worth of repairs to LMI-owned households. There's limited household, or limited repair funds for households up to that 80% LMI, but they are required to contribute at least $425 towards those repairs. The properties must be located in Cherokee, Ida, Plymouth, Manona, and rural Woodbury Counties excluding Sioux City. The property has to remain the principal residence of the homeowner for five years. A forgivable deed restriction is placed on the property for those five years and recorded with the, with the county. The deed restrictions, zero payments, no fees, and 0% interest as long as the owner continues to live in that house for the, for the five-year affordability period. Then if they should sell the property or lose the property for some reason before that five-year period is up, then the loan is reduced by 1/60th for every month that they've resided in the home. Some of the items that we can help with in this program are updating the HVAC systems to a more efficient system, updating electrical. As you guys know, in some of these older homes, we have all sorts of knob and tube uses a little bit of everything. The plumbing systems, again, we see copper, we see some PVC, you just, you see all sorts of different things. Ruffs, windows, anything that is going to help bring the, the houses back up to a standard of living that is acceptable. If we see any substandard or any safety concerns, those are what we, we address first. On this slide here, you can see an example of one of the projects that we did. The roof is in severe disrepair. It's probably been leaking for, for years. Unfortunately, the homeowner just didn't have the ability to, to pay the $8,000 for a new roof. In the bottom left, you can see that we were able to replace that and, and keep from having any future problems on the inside, any mold growth, anything like that from the leaks. In the top left is a table that demonstrates the, the demographics for Woodbury County. In Woodbury County, so far we've served 11 households or in the process of serving 11 households. Some projects are complete, some are still in construction. Thirty, or, excuse me, three of those are at the 30% area median income. Seven are at the 50%, and one at the 80%. Two of those households are considered elderly or disabled. If you look at your handouts that I, I gave to you before the meeting here, that will give you a breakdown of each county, including Woodbury County's activities, housing activities. I'm just gonna, I'm going to touch on Woodbury County here. We have invested, the housing program has invested almost $106,000 into Woodbury County since early spring of 2014. So that's quite an investment in, in our county. We have a total housing trust funds of $42,000. Federal Home Loan Bank, which is, is another funding source, $53,000. The, the local match that we receive from the counties, a little over $9,000 plus the homeowners have contributed. That's pretty in line, if you look at your handout, with, with the other counties in our, in our region. And as you can see, the total funds expended in all five counties is close to $550,000. Again, quite a feat for a little over a year's worth of work. This slide here just shows another example of, of some of our projects. We had another roof and, and siding repair there. One other aspect of the Housing Trust Fund that I'd like to hit on is our mini-grant program. This allows eligible products for direct home buyer assistance, housing to special needs populations, repair rehab of rental units, capacity building for other local housing agencies within our, within our region, or even the demolition of substandard or inhabi, uninhabitable housing. Let me spit that out, so. Our, that, the mini-grant program is, is required to serve people at the 80% or less income, as well as 30% of those funds have to serve the even lower income level at the 30%. They, to be qualified for this mini-grant program, the organizations do have to contribute at least 25% of, of matching, excuse me, matching funds. On this slide is a picture of our current mini-grant recipient, which is the Pride Group in Plymouth County. They were awarded approximately $55,000. So we are, we are planning on doing another project. So if there are agencies that you think could benefit from that in Woodbury County, you know, please have them, have them contact me. And then there's just my, my contact information.
So basically, this keeps people in their homes.
It does. It does. A lot of the repairs that we do are, are repairs that you would not be able to stay in your home if you did not have them completed. You can't stay in there if you don't have heat. We just saw what a family of seven die from carbon monoxide poisoning out east because they're running a generator because they couldn't make their, their utility payments. That's not something we want to see happen in Woodbury County. Yeah, and, and rough leaks with, with the mold. We see a lot of that where we have to go in and, and repair interior damage because they've just let it go too long. So. Go ahead, Jerry.
How do people find out about the Housing Trust Fund? How do people in the community who may be watching this online, I don't know what our, our viewership is out there, but, you know, what's the conduit, for lack of a better term?
They can, they can go online to our, to our website at simco.org. We also work for, with Center for Sioux Land and Mid-Sou, Northeast Nebraska Community Action Agency, and referrals. Connections is also another good referral system for us.
City clerks?
City clerks, yes, yes, yes. County employees.
So for our $15,000, we've got $106,000 returned so far.
Right. And we, this grant will not be completed until fall of 2015, and as I'm sure you guys are seeing with the, with the warmer weather, comes more construction. And that's what we're finding, too. We've been getting an influx of calls requesting our assistance.
So we've spent $546,000. What do we got left in this circle?
We have, I knew you were going to ask that, Mark. We would have approximately $350,000 left of, of the total pot.
And we anticipate the next round of grants we'll bring in?
Another, another, probably close to that $850,000 by the time you combine the funds, so.
Questions?
The elderly and disabled, that's built into the figures that are above that.
Correct. Yes, yes.
The point is, this is a very good program, and it's paying off for us.
Yes, it is.
And it's a cooperative amongst five counties.
Yep.
Which means there's some sharing there in terms of who gets what first and second, and that way we've got stuff going on all the time. So I'm impressed that you keep the counties so evenly matched, because that's tough.
Yeah, it is. I just got a call today from an elderly woman that lost her husband last, last spring, a year ago, and she just couldn't stop thanking me for, for what I did. I didn't do anything. The counties are the ones that pitched in this money and, and, you know, the state and federal funds, so. But, yeah, she was very appreciative of this program, so.
If anyone wants, has someone who could use this program, Dwight Lang is the Director of Simco, and Deputy Director, Michelle Basalinas. Megan, look up Simco, and you've got them.
Yep, and we're also on Facebook and Twitter.
Oh. Very good. Thank you, Megan.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next item up for bid. City Sergeant Bluff. City Sergeant Bluff will present Dogwood Trail Project to the Board requesting TIP funds as a part of the overall project. Today is informational. Mr. Winkle.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members. You have received a packet. I'm John Winkle, Mayor Sergeant Bluff. You've received a packet that kind of summarizes the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've had some meetings with some of you individually. I appreciate that time very much, and happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
For those, excuse me, go ahead.
I appreciate the time that I got to spend with you because it did answer some of my questions, and I'll be getting ahold of you any more.
I appreciate that, and I, as I said, I gave you my phone, my phone number that I answer pretty much any time, and happy to answer any questions you have during the next, what is it, the next meeting, two weeks or a week?
Week.
A week, during the next week, so. I meant that very seriously.
We have a proposal before us that would, in a cooperative venture between a RISE Grant, City of Sergeant Bluff, and TIP dollars from the county urban renewal area, create a road from Highway 75 to the Port Neal Road, south of Sergeant Bluff. Be a joint venture. Mr. Winkle is very aggressive. He plans to bid it this week.
Yeah, I think the ninth of April, we'll be letting bids for the concrete.
So there'll be a road by the end of the year.
That's our plan, not without the county's help. So I enjoyed the meetings today. I would just like to say once again how important the project is to Sergeant Bluff. It's going to do a lot of things for Sergeant Bluff. It's going to get, get a lot of hazmat and truck traffic away from our schools by about a mile. That's huge for us. A much less talked-about benefit is the fact that we will, with this new intersection across a railroad track, that gives us five crossings, and now whenever there's a coal train in town, the four we have are all blocked at one time. So now, even when the coal train, the unit trains are there, we'll have this south, this new crossing will be open for emergency traffic as well as general traffic. That's huge for us. The other benefit for Sergeant Bluff is economic in the sense of providing businesses to support Port Neal, Port Neal industrial area. And I think the biggest benefit, I'd like to applaud the county for the foresight, putting together this plan of which we've been allowed to be the guinea pig for. And next week, I'll be in Washington, D.C., when you're having your board meeting, so I won't be here then, so. I'm not being presumptive, but I'd like to thank you for hiring Terry Lutz. He and I had some differences here and there, but those were all very positively resolved. And the plan that you guys have come up with is definitely going to benefit the whole county, and it's why the CF Industries and the AGP projects are so important to us as an entire county. And again, I just want to thank you very much for that foresight, so that positions it out there to help everybody. Also, as a guinea pig, I'll just tell you that we're taking that role very serious with David Gleiser. He's arranged meetings with us, and we're working with the Mayors and Correction Bill and Cushing, trying to bring a project together. Would provide something all the way across the county, and it would probably involve the county, call it the 3C, some kind of a 2080 correction bill, Cushing in the county, maybe. But again, it's fantastic that you're willing to support the entire county with this program, so.
I do have a pressing question.
Yes.
Who came up with the name Dogwood Trail?
Basically, we're very grateful that we have good farming partners in Sergeant Bluff, and so far we've been able to work with three of those on very short notice on different projects, and also on this project. And the owner of this piece of ground that the road's going through, not many farmers would sell you a road right through the middle of their farm, and this gentleman did, and his name is Doug Wood. So if you take the U out of Doug Wood, you get Dogwood. So it's a way that...
Very good.
...we can honor one of the oldest farming names in our community, and to show that we really appreciate our agricultural neighbors, because we've been able to do multiple deals and get some of their property annexes and things, so we, we really appreciate all that.
Thank you.
John, can you tell us what's happened in terms of growth in Sergeant Bluff the last few years, and why a project like this is necessary for the good of the public?
I would cite a Simco study that came out here a couple of weeks ago, and it said by the year 2040, there'll be 8,000 people in Sergeant Bluff, and we'll have a certain percent of growth. And the same study said that Sioux City would be decreasing, and that the county in general and all the other cities in the county would be decreasing. So we're either blessed or cursed to be the one place that seems to have this growth potential. And so our challenge is not only to take advantage of that for the benefit of the whole county, but then also working with you guys to spread that over the whole county. First 14 months, we have a community meeting every six months approximately. We had 362 the first time, over 400 the second time. We call these COMCON, and we were able to announce the first 14 months of our administration, so to speak. We've added $14 million in taxable valuation to our community. And at the last COMCON, a month or so ago, we announced projects that are going to total close to another $20 million. And some of that's residential, but our real focus of our council and our staff is on the commercial side, light industry, commercial, and general business side. And that's where we're getting most of our growth, so we're extremely grateful for that. Is that what you were after?
Yeah, I had heard that figure out there, and so I just thought that's a pretty good, good news story, and I think it looks like a great project. I think it fits in with the passports, TIP policy, and something that we can rally around, and makes good economic development sense, so I'm, I'm excited about it and the growth potential, and believe that Sioux City will grow and Woodbury County will grow despite the prognostication there.
I agree. I'm not accepting that, that other, that other part of the study. That's not correct. I just know it.
But in terms of economic... In fact, we're not sure we want 8,000 either. Anyway, go ahead.
But in terms of economic development, I, I see this as a, as a winner, something that we invest in with TIP revenue, our paid-back, and on a pro-rata basis, and I think it's a, it's a good thing, so I'm excited for you and for the county.
Yeah, we're, we're in the right place at the right time, or the right place at the wrong time. I'm not sure which, so we have this huge responsibility to make, to get it right as the guinea pigs getting through this process, which you're giving us the opportunity to do, number one, and number two, to make sure it gets spread appropriately throughout the whole county, as all of you, now that we've had these meetings, have reminded me that every one of you want to get that through the whole county, so that's, get those benefits out there. So, Mr. Chairman and the Board, I really want to thank you in that regard, even though I'm appearing presumptive maybe, but I'll be in Washington, D.C. with the State Dinner Group next week.
So you'll be back if it doesn't go your way to say other words to us? I'm just kidding.
Any other questions? Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually, I'll be with somebody doing Washington.
Okay, back to Mr. Narra. Consideration of permits to work within the highway right-of-way for Chris.
We didn't get the plan set yet.
Oh, that's right.
Now I'm back in order. I've had time to consult the agenda. The next...
The next item we have on the agenda is approval of the culvert plans to replace our P two sixty bridge on Grundy Avenue. This is approximately one mile to the west and then a mile and a half south of Climbing Hill. We're replacing an existing twenty-seven foot by eighteen foot slab bridge built in nineteen twenty with a new twin twelve by ten box culvert. Recommend approval of the plans for letting.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Okay?
This requires the signature of all five board members. Boxes are at the left side of the sheet.
Next item.
Bigging down. Now we're to the approval of the right of way permit for Mike and Terry Pagan. They're going to be building a new house on Charles Avenue. This is just about right across the road from where the Scarecrow Acres or Pumpkin Farm, as it's frequently known, is at. I recommend approval of the permit.
If we do F.
Need a motion?
Are we on G? I'm sorry.
We're on G now.
Yes, G.
Because we did F.
Did we do that?
I need F.
Let's do G. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. F.
Can you flip up a little bit?
Consideration of permits to work within the highway right of way for Chris.
Yes, this is the contractor and landowner who started work out in the right of way before they had an approved permit. We did approve them to continue the work and complete it to eliminate a possible traffic safety hazard with the permit following for board approval. This is allowing them to reshape the ditch, back slope, and they did some work on the forest slope before we got them stopped to shape the area for mowing. A new house is under construction at that location. It had been an abandoned farmstead with some fallen down buildings. Overall, they're making a very nice residence out there in an area that had been allowed to die on the vine.
Okay, need a motion on F?
Move it.
Need a second? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right.
Mark, did you get a phone call on a bridge on Pocahontas or?
Yes, I did, and I spoke with
When the guy called me, I was on the road, so I told him, "Call you."
Yeah, I spoke with the landowner about that. The bridge on Pocahontas is a little bit south of Correctionville. It was one of the projects that was let with our special bridge fund money. The, he was concerned because all the equipment had been pulled out. That was, the equipment belonged to a different subcontractor and the bridge contractor. A new subcontractor's coming in. He's supposed to be starting the earthwork next week to get that bridge off of the traffic, so. We're hoping two to three weeks and that project will be complete. The final item I had today was to, something we hadn't done before, but I was thinking I had one less week than it turned out that I had. I'm going, I've got the five-year construction program for fiscal years twenty sixteen through twenty twenty. I'm going to hand these out to the board a little bit early so that you have a chance to look them over. Next week they'll be coming before you with the Iowa DOT budget for approval. Some of the highlights in here. Some of the highlights in here are, if you go to the summary page, which is near the back, you'll see that after twenty eighteen, there's a reduction in the amount of money within the program. Twenty eighteen is the year that our special bridge levy
Another one.
sunsets.
What page are you on?
It's right ahead of the maps, near the back. It's the second page ahead of the maps. You can see that after twenty eighteen, the amount goes down about one point eight million and then point eight million dollars in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Our program will go back to its normal fluctuations. Twenty eighteen is the last year of the special bridge levy as proposed by the board. That was a five-year program. The project that you approved today, County Bridge P two sixty, is one of the twenty sixteen, or twenty fifteen fiscal year projects using that special bridge levy money. The second one is Bridge X one oh one. That one should be coming to you in about two or three weeks. We have right of way to acquire with that project before it'll be brought to you for scheduling the letting. This does not include at this time Dogwood Trail. That'll be one that we'll have to amend in, assuming that the board works with the City of Sergeant Bluff on that project. It is a very good project. I think it's one that merits construction. And I think it's an important link to tie the county road system together in that Port Neal CF industrial area down there and to eliminate the traffic up near the schools as the major Sergeant Bluff noted. One of the reasons that you look at this year as being so large, we have a lot of projects that we led in fiscal year twenty fifteen that are not completed in this fiscal year, so that money you'll find carries over into the next year. We also have a large RISE project, which is the paving of the accessory lanes on Port Neal Road and two hundred fifty-fifth Street. And we have the paving of CF Drive, so we have special RISE funds that are pulled into this year as well. We also have a considerable amount of federal aid coming in this year as well, so. If any of you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. I can discuss any of the projects in here with you.
Is the gas tax in this?
The gas tax money is figured into this as well. It came in time for us to begin to program. There's three new projects in fiscal year twenty sixteen that you have not seen before. One of the first projects we added is one of, I felt, the greatest unmet needs the county has had. We've got special funds for foreign-to-market roads. We have special funds for bridges. But we haven't anything to really maintain our gravel roads and we have over nine hundred miles of those roads. We have three hundred thousand dollars budgeted as a new construction project within this fiscal year budget for going out and resurfacing. We're estimating about twenty miles per territory. It's going to depend on how the prices come in. But in each of the four districts, we'll be able to do an additional twenty miles of gravel resurfacing or eighty miles, which is about what our budget has been deficient since two thousand six. With the increased cost of gravel that we started to see in fiscal year twenty ten, we've been doing about eighty miles less per year. Our goal is going to be to try and, over the first five years of this program, do about three hundred thousand dollars worth of graveling where we're hauling directly to the roads rather than hauling to stockpiles. We'll keep our stockpile money the same as it has been, maybe a little bit of growth for inflation. But we're also going to try and get some immediately to those gravel roads to try and improve their quality.
So if you've been eighty miles short, what are you doing each year?
We have been in a spot gravel program. If it's black, it gets gravel. And if it isn't black, it doesn't get gravel until it gets that way, so.
So no preventative maintenance, it's all fix it as it goes?
Yeah, we've seen a gradual erosion in our gravel road bases out there. If you talk to Roger Milligan, who was a secondary road employee for over forty years, when he used to go out and dig section corners, he was digging through anywhere six to eight inches of gravel out on our roads. As our surveyors today are going out to dig section corners, they're finding two to three inches. So we're down to about fifty percent on many of our roads of the gravel that we had fifteen to twenty years ago. It's driven by cost. It's driven by flat road use tax fund income. But, but that is one area where we're bringing some of that money to bear immediately. The other thing that came up, if you look at the next two projects, and this is on the third page of projects, you'll see a culvert replacement M two oh eight. And if you go to the fourth column in, you see that's listed as new. And Project N forty-eight also listed as new. That second line is whether it was in the previous program that it's making its way through the five years or if it's a new program added this year is what that new or previous means. These two projects were picked up in this year's inspections. We tried to go around and get a good look at some of our short-span bridges that are under twenty feet. Feds only care about the ones above twenty feet. We have to watch them all. We found two that were in condition where they need to be replaced quickly. And for the first time in my seven years of putting together your program, when we find bridges in that serious condition where we've had to immediately load restrict them and push them toward replacement, we were able to add projects without dropping one. So we actually had enough money this year to fund those two new projects. We've added two additional bridges to the program. We'll be going through over the next couple of years and massaging that bridge program further. One of the chief difficulties has been estimated construction prices. You've seen a lot of work going on with DOT on Highway twenty, Highway twenty-nine, Highway three up in Plymouth County. There's a lot of state work going on right now. It's driving our costs up, whether it's bridges or pavement. We're paying more than we had been in fiscal year twenty thirteen when we started with that one point three million dollar program. Dennis and I were going over the figures for the special bridge levy here as we were looking at the DOT budget. Right now, we're looking at, for the sixteen projects we laid out, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars above the six point five million that the board is dedicating to that program. We'll be able to make that up. I mean, we'll have the, the money through that dime to make sure we get those projects done. But it, you know, we are seeing a gradual increase in all of our construction costs. So we're fortunate that we're not having to drop projects at the very least. The last five pages are maps, so you can see where some of these projects are. And again, if any of the board members have questions or if the press does, please don't hesitate to give me a call and I can answer questions about the projects.
Are you going to separate out that gas tax money so we can see where it goes? Is that a possibility?
It, it's all coming in in one income stream.
Okay, I get it.
So about all you're going to be able to do is to look at the comparison between fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, you'll see some impact. Twenty sixteen is where you'll actually see the gas tax impact full, full on. One thing that doesn't show up quite as readily that the board doesn't always see is our foreign-to-market fund. We had been running between a one and a half and a two-year borrow ahead in the foreign-to-market fund with our projects. There's a lot of reasons, like would take me a while to explain why it's always good to be borrowed ahead in that program, but we were looking at one and a half to two years borrow ahead. With the extra money now coming in from the road use tax, that's cut to about a year ahead. We had to delay our projects on D twenty-two, which is Correctionville Road and Hundred and Fiftieth Street, just north of Highway twenty. We had to delay that project for over nine and a half months because we were borrowed ahead more than two years. With the RISE project we funded on the Port Neal overpass replacement, and we had a federal aid project on Highway seventy-five that we were funding. It put us a significant borrow ahead until all of those outside grant funds caught up and caught up our foreign-to-market program. We're looking at going from one point two to about one point five five million dollars a year in the foreign-to-market program. That extra three hundred fifty thousand a year is making our program much healthier and should put us in a position where we won't see delays because of borrow ahead in the future, which I think is good for us from a stability point of view.
Very good. Questions?
Do you want to set up a tour in May or sometime? Well, I think it'd be extremely beneficial for the community members.
We had talked about that and our supervisor, Taylor, had, had requested that. And either anytime April twenty-first or after, we could look at doing that on a Tuesday ahead of your board meeting probably now with your, given your new schedule.
Does that coincide with your taxes or what?
No. April, April fourteenth, I've got a daughter leaving the country and I want to see her off at the airport, so she'll be gone for a year. And I don't want to miss that, so that's why I'm saying April twenty-first or thereafter, so.
Why don't you come back with dates for us and we can figure it out from there?
Okay, I'll give you a range of dates that we can look at and get back to you then. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Jeremy Taylor, information on long-term facility planning.
Thank you very much. This is a proposal for a long-term facilities plan. And this is informational only, and what I wanted to do is rather than give this whole bulk of information over a three to four day Easter weekend and then expect that everybody would have the time and due diligence to work through it, is put this on as an information item and give kind of a thirty thousand area, thirty thousand foot aerial view. So looking at some of the needs that have come before the county, we've had a couple of elevator repairs estimated over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Supervisor Smith has wisely asked in the past for a space study. We have some Nexant-driven facility energy assessments from two or three years back that identify a whole host of energy efficiency needs. We hear about the law enforcement steps, which I think we'll talk about tonight, issues in the jail. Prairie Hills, I know the Sulan District Health is coming forward with a, between a three hundred thousand and five hundred and fifty thousand dollar CIP request. And so it's one of those that I, that I've just taken a step back and said it would be good to have, and I mentioned this before, what McClure Engineering did in terms of economic development for roadmap for the future for our building facilities in terms of long-term planning. The Baker Group has been in business since nineteen sixty-three, implemented over twenty-five million dollars worth of projects. And they really have worked with the school district. And if you don't know, the school district ended up borrowing approximately two and a half million dollars from the Iowa Energy Bank at a one percent interest rate and has realized, or is in the process of realizing, over four hundred thousand dollars in rebates from Mid-American. And so the Baker Group has been working hand in hand. And with them, they are really the, the construction manager or the project manager. And they work as the county's advocate. They help realize energy efficiency potentials and rebates. They maintain the continuity, really a professional concept through completion plan and work with all procurement laws and work with building services staff and using local vendors through that procurement process. What they'll do is they will come in for no upfront cost or obligation during Phase One, which is the initial assessment. They'll spend a couple of days in each of our buildings and give a top to bottom assessment of needs, terms of life on our HVAC equipment, building envelope, windows, roofs, and identifying kind of a prioritization and working with where we would realize the life of these projects in terms of paybacks and efficiencies and really do so at no upfront cost. I think it'd be a wise thing to do. What I've done initially is just put this information in the packet and then I've asked Chairman Munson for our next meeting to have Dave Jorgensen from the Baker Group come in and present on the materials. So that's the thirty thousand foot aerial overview. I'd be happy to answer any initial questions you may have, but that's what I wanted to at least have you start to think about.
The study that you have in front of you, that does not answer the same questions?
No, it doesn't. What, what this does, Mid-American contracts with two groups. They previously contracted with Nexant and will answer some of those same questions, so on the HVAC and on the lighting. But this is only Mid-American's arm to be able to get engineers in to say, here's the efficiencies on rebate potentials. They won't look at roofs or windows or the front steps of the LEC because this is the, the only way that Mid-American can give a rebate is if they've had their engineers and their engineers are this outside company, Nexant, now they're using clear results. So it will answer some of those questions, but it won't give the, the total scope from top to bottom.
Do they expect a contract from us?
They will, they would at some point. The Phase One initial step is a preliminary building and equipment survey where they spend the time in our buildings and they're sort of giving the aerial overview. Here's what they're seeing in terms of Here's what they're seeing in terms of, um, the life of a roof or HVAC equipment. Um, they'll do an ASTR one level energy audit. That's completely free. At that step, um, the board could decide whether to go forward and have a more detailed analysis audit where they would look at some pre-engineering. Um, they would give some more specific recommendations on, um, dollar figures, but we would incur no cost through phase one.
Do we get the results from phase one if we don't go forward with them?
We do, in, in fact, one of the things that David's mentioned, I'll allow him to speak for himself, but is sometimes the, the amount of work that they're investing upfront is a way for us to establish a partnership and for them to kind of prove themselves. I mean, if they come up with a product that we're unimpressed with and what we say, this doesn't give us the level of detail that we need. We haven't had a good working relationship with even the first one or two weeks. We're under no obligation. What they simply need is a letter of intent. That gives them access to our buildings, to working with building services, to be able to tour, um, and to be able to, to look from top to bottom, to get on our roofs, to get behind the, the wall, so to speak, and to see our, our equipment and what we have going on.
I don't have a question, but I'd just like to encourage my fellow supervisors to strongly consider this. Uh, I was fortunate enough Supervisor Taylor and I to meet with, uh, Dave Jorgensen, um, today. And the way he described it to me was that it's a home inspection on steroids. And just given how useful that can be in our own lives to increase energy efficiency in our homes, I think there's a lot of possibilities in the courthouse and our buildings. So, so I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea from the standpoint that, um, what's happening right now, the elevator and the front steps, it's kind of like, oh, my gosh, the world is ending, we've gotta fix it today. We've gotta get way past that. We've gotta get into a routine of, uh, uh, projections over the next so many years so that there are less and less surprises that come to us on facilities that the county owns. And I, I, seems to me like a easy way to get started.
And, and one of the things, just to be clear too, they can do all of the, the construction work, the electrical work, the, um, roofing work, but they don't because they wanna be an independent, um, project manager working with our local vendors. And so, although they have the capabilities of doing so, um, they don't do so. And they also don't do the engineering because Iowa code prohibits them from actually doing the engineering themselves. So they're acting in a construction manager or project manager role, um, in, in complying with Iowa code.
I guess my first thought would be, we have tried to prioritize, but somehow stuff always comes up, it doesn't get on the list. I mean, from when I started, there was, we didn't even have a five-year plan to be. So this I see as the next step. I mean, we've started it, we've tried to, to look at projects, but it's not working all the way. I agree because stuff is just popping up. And, and I say, where was it back in December being turned in as a project? Two months later, all of a sudden, it's, it comes as, as a priority. And I thought, well, I thought we had something in place, you know, to get it on the plan. So maybe we do need to do that first, um, level. I'm sure when the cost comes back, we'll probably have to, you know, reassess again and see, see what that means. But, um, it, it, it seems like a good idea.
I think one of the problems we've had is nobody knows how to do this in our group. We don't have the skills to be able to get this done or the time because it's a pretty big project. So next week he'll come in and we'll have a further discussion.
Right, and, and just so it's clear, next week's information too. So there's no action. And that way, the goal, and, and maybe I've learned my lesson, but the goal is to give everyone time to digest and to think and to slow down, so appreciate the-
We'll see.
Okay.
See if this is just a one-time deal, Jerry.
Page thirteen of the booklet here gives a good idea what step one does including.
On what page?
Page thirteen.
Are you talking about the PowerPoint though?
Yes. It's step one.
So this is page sixty-seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay. As step one, delivery of building and equipment survey that preliminary report to customer team. He has a pretty idea what they're gonna do and this is no cost. Step two is the next cost.
And, and it shows examples where they've worked not only with school districts, but also with Clay County, um, and some other, other government entities, so.
And we, and we probably have a lot of this information, but it's not pulled together, you know, in a way that allows us to plan better in the future because it's piecemeal here, there and yonder.
It's been a funding priority all these years and it will be for the next couple of years.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, on to the next one. Community service recognition.
Uh, this is a pretty simple one, Mr. Chair. This is, uh, looking at, uh, we moved forward on, uh, community recognition and, and did so for, uh, Lonny Gustafson. And I think have talked about possibly doing this monthly instead of every two weeks, which is what I originally proposed. Um, I put forward someone in March and I understand, uh, Mr. Chair, you said that you would like to-
May fifth.
-have someone in May. Um, so we have, uh, an open window in April and was wondering if someone is interested in, in taking that. And then if, if we want to establish some sort of rotation or just ask at, at the beginning of each month. We didn't really establish that, uh, early on, so.
I can do June.
So that's my, uh, those are my opening remarks. And, uh, if anyone has, uh, an idea that, if anyone would like to do April otherwise or if we want to establish a rotation, what do you all think?
I don't know.
Uh, I would do April. I think. Uh, yeah, a couple very good ones. Have to be the last. Have to be the twenty-eighth.
Just for simplicity's sake, maybe we wanna just keep the order the way it's, it is for this first, uh, month. And if there's changes, we can work them out amongst ourselves.
Okay.
What is, what does everyone else think?
Well, if I had somebody in mind right now, I might be jumping on. But I, I, the person I did have in mind, I, I'm now thinking won't work out, so I, I'm, I don't have a replacement yet.
Okay.
So is that gonna hurt anybody's feelings of Chairman Munson goes two months in a row or?
It doesn't hurt my feelings.
If you have someone, then we can just, uh, we can bump them and-
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, um, item number fifteen, action on polling Woodbury County employees and spouses.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we talked, uh, last week as an informational item on the Human Resources Department, uh, polling county employees on the possibility, and I wanted to make sure that it went out as a possibility, not a promise, um, that the, the funding level of these, uh, health scans was not only fifty dollars at a reduced rate for Mercy, but could be twenty-five dollars of the pleasure of, uh, you all to, uh, to help subsidize that with the idea that this will help mitigate future claims and actually be an investment. And here to discuss that is our HR director.
Yeah, we've had a tremendous response. Uh, we keep getting more every day. As of, uh, the end of the day yesterday, we had a hundred and nineteen employees. That doesn't count my department. And I know we've got, uh, five people in my department that would, uh, jump on the chance. So we're at a hundred and twenty-four employees who would participate at the reduced amount. Um, fifty-nine spouses and I'd add a couple to that. So we're over sixty spouses. And that doesn't count the people that have responded today. So, we, we've just had tremendous response. Most of the reaction has been, why wouldn't somebody wanna have this done? But, uh, I, I think, uh, the number of respondents we have, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, uh, we probably will find somebody that is in fairly quick need of service. And by fairly quick need, I mean within the year. Uh, that, that probably will pay for anything, uh, involved with the testing in itself. And, uh, it's just another one of those preventive items that I think will help, uh, keep us in a long-term proactive kind of, uh, situation. And, and as you look around and you see the way healthcare costs are going up, uh, proactive is much better than reactive. So I, you've got my wholehearted recommendation.
Can I ask Dennis a couple of questions?
Yes.
So, I just did the math there. A hundred and twenty-four employees, sixty spouses, that's a hundred and eighty-four. I could be wrong because I was an English teacher, but it's about forty-six hundred dollars.
That can come out of the health insurance fund. We do currently have two point seven five oh million, I believe. And that's after we just had insurance holiday. So, we didn't fall far behind. We stayed pretty much on pace. So yes, that would be a health insurance, uh, nine twenty-eight, our self-help health expense.
So we could afford every employee and every spouse if they so wanted to. I mean, that would be-
We've had, uh, our claims, the first, uh, the first money of April's been agreed to, it's only sixty thousand dollars.
And is there something, Dennis, that you said you have under preventative services within that fund? Or was I, am I making that up?
That, that'd still be in the health insurance fund.
Okay.
Yes.
But that's something that's there?
Yes.
Yes.
This, uh, preventative service allows us to use that money.
Yes.
I had all this done and before Christmas and it cost me a lot more than this. My share.
Well, I, I like the idea that there's still skin in the game, so to speak, on the part of, of the employees, that it's, it's something that they have to, to wanna do, but we're, we're helping make it a little easier. And based on our response, I think it sounds good. So, can I, and just look at me, um, if you have heartburn on this, but could we make a, a, a motion to, uh, help out on a twenty-five dollar per person basis for an employee or a spouse who is covered up to five thousand dollars or is that?
I would personally leave it open.
I'd leave it open too.
And if four hundred did sign up, gee.
We're better for it.
I think the more we have, the better. You never know who's gonna pop up with that problem. One of the frightening ones to me is the aneurysm because the aneurysm is completely without symptom. And, uh, you could be healthy as a horse, look like you're in great shape and, uh, have problems with a, an aneurysm that could be fatal, so.
So I would then move that the board approve of the cost from the health insurance fund under preventative services to subsidize at a twenty-five dollar rate per employee or spouse, um, over the age of forty, covered under the, um, health insurance of the county. Did you get all that, Mr. Gil?
I was gonna ask for clarification. So it's just, you're paying, uh, an employee wants to do this, it's gonna cost them twenty-five dollars. And it's paying under the age of forty.
Right, or it's worse.
Or-
So you wouldn't qualify, you're too young, Mr. Gil.
Right.
I, I would ask if we could add-
Do it anyway.
I would ask if we could add, uh, for someone with a family history. If you've got family history of heart attack and, or stroke, I would ask that we be able to do them at a younger age.
Excellent idea.
Great.
You can, surprisingly, you're more likely to die of a heart attack if you have that heart attack when you're in your thirties than when you're in your sixties. Your body hasn't prepared for it yet. I mean, if you have that heart attack, you're let, granted, you're less likely to have that heart attack in, in your thirties, but it's more likely to be fatal.
Okay, you made me nervous. I didn't sign up, but sign me up for everything now.
Okay.
Did you get all that, Pat?
We just have two more people that are gonna sign.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. All right, item number sixteen. I had a call from a, um, lady who, uh, is in a motorized wheelchair and she was unable to enter the front doors of the LEC. Mr. Headed did a little investigation. We need two door openers because there are two doors to get in. They don't have to both open because they're three-foot doors. Uh, but we need two of those doors to be on automatic switches, uh, to allow everybody to enter the LEC. Uh, I would, uh, take a motion to have Building Services get this done. Um, do you have it in your budget?
Not really, but we probably, we didn't see what happened before the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
I'm bringing your attention, but you also, you also got- Mike Headed, Building Services?
Thank you.
You also got Trosper Hoyt.
Yeah, same situation?
Brought up, but yeah, I was, I just was just thinking about that right there. Trosper Hoyt doesn't have him either.
The other thing, how wide is the door opening?
Thirty, that's thirty-six inches.
At the LEC.
At the LEC, so you don't need a double one like we have here.
How wide is a wheelchair? A motori-
Under thirty-six.
A motorized wheelchair.
Under thirty-six. You have a thirty-six inch door, that should be FDA, uh, approved. Uh, I talked to the guy, oh, this morning, ten o'clock or so. He says as long as you're thirty-six, you won't need the double like we have here. These doors that are on the courthouse are, are very narrow door, so that, that wouldn't pass.
And then we've got the problem in the wintertime of the heating. So what do we do there?
That's why you gotta, open ones open, you go in, hit another button, next door opens. You wouldn't open up both at one time. You'd have to open first one, go in, hit an, another button, which would open the, the next.
Another Sally Porter at the law enforcement center.
Right, and, uh, Trosper Hoyt, same, would be the same.
Are those thirty-six inch doors?
I would think yes. I believe, I haven't measured them, but I, there's only one set of doors, there's no double doors there anyway.
Uh-oh.
So, we can start with what you got.
Okay. When we get into seventeen A, I do have a report there, money that is left after we do all the projects that we anticipate doing this year. And yes, we should be able to do both projects at both buildings, uh, our CIP.
Okay.
And I'll show you when we get to it, that we do have the money.
Now, it is double door at both places. So if I had to take a rough guess at this, I'd say you're gonna have ten grand.
In each?
Both buildings, no, for, for the whole works. Two, e- each one's about twenty-five hundred bucks. And maybe if we do them all, right off the bat, maybe we can get a little better price. So I, but educated guess would be about five thousand per-
Building.
Building.
You know, and I came through the LEC today, the, the doors, so one of the doors didn't even close. I mean, it was open about this, this much.
Plus, actually, a little bit of air pressure problem inside, lower address next tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Well, getting back to that heaving, something has to be fixed there because in the wintertime, some of those doors you couldn't even open.
Well, that's all due to swelling, the, the concrete and everything else lives in holes. We have to go over and adjust those doors probably three, four times a year just because of, of the way everything's moving. That building moves all the time. Uh, there's an adjustment you go over. You can adjust them one day and everything's working great. Two, three, four days later, the weather changes, you're adjusting them again, which we, we, we do constantly.
Need a motion to approve getting this done out of the CIP funding.
For the LEC? Just for the LEC or both of them?
You only have the LEC on the agenda today.
Yeah. All right, we'll bring back the, uh, Trosper Hoyt.
Why don't you bring them both back and do an all at one shot?
Okay, I would say you go ahead and investigate. All right. Thank you. Next one, discussion and action on working with the city of Sioux City on an RFP for garbage collection services, Mr. Butler.
Okay, while you're done, you have in your packet there, results of what I've collected over the past several weeks. We have broke it down into each individual's requirement, how many times they've collected, yes?
You're gonna do B before A?
Oh, we should do A first, our main entries of the LEC steps.
I need a motion to, um, uh, postpone that till next week.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, now we're back on the RFP. And this is to get the permission of the board of supervisors to work with the city of Sioux City with the finance director to do a joint proposal on garbage collection. As you can see in the report we did send in to you, you can see where, in the last page, and I'll include it to you really, you see the difference in our cost collections per, um, per container. Like our one and a half yards range from fifty-three dollars to ninety-eight dollars. On our two- On our two-year containers, it runs from $94, or $88 to $138. There's a lot of inconsistency, and there are places maybe some of the garbage collection agencies cannot go out to. They don't serve it, but one way to find out is bid it out. And we'd like to do it with the city, because when you have mass, you get cheaper prices normally. So, I guess we're just requesting that we work together with the City Finance Director and go out and have them prepare the RFP, and we'll go out and see what happens.
The, um, design of this is important. Uh, each location or each department will be billed separately, based on their use. It's not a mass billing. So, and the city's gotta have it that way as well, because of all their different funding sources. So, department heads would not see anything different from what they're doing now. Somebody'd come pick up the garbage and they'd get a bill.
Now, I'd like to just say that this is a result of our monthly meetings with the city. We're looking for more and more ways to do joint ventures with them. There won't be a big disruption to anybody, but yet, cut, save some money potentially.
We do have, uh, situations where there are contracts that may be out there a year or so. Um, and a part of this process would be, as soon as that contract is up, we would roll this into the bid. And the bidders will know that.
And if there's enough savings, or say, a two- or three-year contract, we'll have to have our Assistant County Attorney here, your legal counsel, look at the contract, see if the cost of getting out would save us money to pay whatever costs to get out and go continue for the next three years. But once we get to that point, then we'll use assistance of Joshua.
I think the other thing that was discussed is that it could be a three-year contract if they don't raise the price. If they raise the price, it goes back out.
Right.
Need a motion to move forward with an RFP with the city?
I would move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, sir. Reports on committees and meetings.
Can we go back to 16, 17, what?
We just did 17.
Post-call action on 17, does that tie you to 16?
17A was postponed till next week. 17B was just approved.
Yeah, 17, 16.
16.
Can you, can we have a motion to post-call action on 16?
I'm moving that we postpone action on item number 16, uh, the door openers on the LEC and Trosper Hoyt until next week's meeting.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, now we're good to go. Reports.
Hi, uh, I'll go with... Uh, yesterday, we had a Board of Adjustment meeting, uh, for AGP. This was in order to hear a conditional use permitting. And I want to thank the individuals serving on the committee. Uh, Brian, uh, was the chair, and Bob was the vice chair, and I think I had their last names right, but I'm just gonna leave it at Brian and Bob. Uh, also want to thank Katie Cowling, the Ken Garden, Joanne Sadler. Um, as you know, March 23rd, Planning and Zoning, uh, sent onto the Board of Adjustment a, a certified recommendation on the company's background. And, uh, we had responses from local, state, and federal authorities on any concerns. We had a public hearing, and no one showed up. Which is a very good thing, because that means that, um, this is, as the Planning and Zoning Director said, it's legal, and it makes sense, and there's no better fit for the use of the land. And then I asked these six individuals from AGP, how are we doing as a county? As far as economic development, planning, and zoning, do you find that this has been a, um, good county to work with? And they said, communication's been great.
Did they mention my name in particular?
Supervisor Smith several times. But, no, they, they did say, uh, that, um, they would, uh, say that communication's been great. They mentioned, uh, a couple of department heads, John Polello and Mark Nara. And so, um, I think it's a very good thing. It's a good investment in terms of value-added agriculture, and so we wanted to pass that along. Then, uh, Sioux Land District Health, uh, attended their, uh, their meeting. And the director came forward with some, uh, proposed goals for the new year, new year on workforce development plan, quality improvement plan. Um, looking at, uh, the mitigation of sexually transmitted infections, um, as well as the community health needs assessment and health improvement planning, um, cooperation with Mercy Medical and Unity Point. Discussed briefly, uh, the CIP project. And what I told him is that I understand that they are reverting back to the county approximately $133,000 that is above this, the 25% reserve limit, if it'll come back to us. And the agreement was that they would be in consideration in our long-term capital improvement plan, with no promises of what exactly that looks like. So, we'll look at, um, their proposal, um, going forward. Um, but just thought I'd have due diligence and sharing that with you. And then finally, and I'll cut it short, uh, Jim O'Keane, uh, mentioned, uh, a couple of things that he had learned from a study that in Woodbury County, a low birth weight is down, which is very good. High school graduation rates are up, and dropout rate is down. Downside, he said, half of, uh, half of all students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Uh, which is, uh, be disconcerting. So, we do have some, some challenges, but I think those folks are doing tremendous work and appreciate all of them, so...
I, uh, have an update on the Emergency Management Commission. Uh, the Executive Committee, of which I am a part, interviewed, uh, final applicants and made a unanimous recommendation to the full committee, which will be discussed and I believe acted on at the next Wednesday meeting. Uh, I won't be in town next week. I'll be in DC, but, uh, I, I believe that will, uh, I believe that individual will be hired, and the process is going swimmingly.
Very good. Anyone else? Uh, citizen concerns. Anyone wish to speak?
I have some. Could you pass those out? Maybe, Pat Gill, Woodbury County Auditor. Maybe we should have something on the agenda for elected officials to, to talk with you folks. I've got a couple of things to, uh, I wanted to bring to your attention. First thing is the, uh, an issue's come up with the, in the Recorder's Office about, uh, charging fees for copied documents. Uh, we've worked with Joshua a little bit, uh, for, ever since we took over, uh, vital records, we've been charging... There was an agreement that, uh, when all the recorders got together, that, uh, counties would be charging $5, uh, for uncertified, uh, copies. And, uh, the county would get that money, but, uh, and then, uh, asking for IDs when folks were coming in to look at records and that sort of thing. Uh, there's a gentleman that's been traveling the state, uh, talking to different, uh, counties about the, the issue and the way that, uh, they've been handling things. We got those, uh, kind of rules and procedures that came from the Department of, uh, Health. And, uh, anyway, we've been charging $5. We've been asking for ID, and this, and the individual has challenged it on the open records, uh, law. And he's, uh, considering taking, uh, action against counties. So, we've discussed this with Joshua. His recommendation is that, uh, and some of those, uh, that, you know, it's not required, we don't be asking for ID anymore, and that we charge, I think, 50 cents a piece. That, what they were doing, uh, originally with those $5 was because there was an effort made on behalf of those employees to, to do the search, uh, to put this, uh, copy together, as opposed to just going over and making a copy of something. Because you had to kind of create these documents in order to put them together. So, uh, we're still looking at that, but, uh, Joshua's recommendation has been that, uh, we just charge a standard fee that we do, like the rest of the documents that we do, so... And I asked for, uh, how much, uh, uh, revenue that we're talking, and it was only, I think it's less than $10,000 a year what we're getting from, uh, the Recorder's Office. But just wanted to bring it to your attention that, uh, this individual has been threatening litigation, so we've adjusted to that. We don't know what's gonna occur there.
I just had somebody tell me Sunday that they paid $32 for a birth certificate, somewhere in the country.
Yeah, uh, we can't remember exactly, and we don't get all that money that we do for... State gets most of the money that we prepare for them, and we took that over from the state. Uh, that's the first one. The second one is that, uh, uh, just want to bring another one to your attention and ask for, Sheriff Person asked the board to give direction to, uh, planning and zoning, to get, uh, some copying of ordinances to us. We've asked for it several times, uh, signed ordinance, and Karen has asked for it too, and, uh, we haven't received a response. I was hoping that individual would be here tonight, but I don't know why, what the issue is. Uh, the next thing is, um, the discussion that we had about the, uh, website. Talking about, uh, things that are published there and what it would be as far as the, uh, being transparent and working with the Board Office as far as trying to, uh, get issues, uh, like the contracts, get those documents up there, posted, and the ordinances and that sort of thing. And we just want to, I guess, direction from you is that it's okay to work with the Board Office on doing that. Or if one of you folks want to be involved, or do we just work directly with the, your office?
Terms of the website.
Yes, and as an example, what occurred here is this, I heard from the Sheriff's Office about this one. Mr. Drew, our Sheriff Drew, sent this over. Uh, one of his employees pointed out that this, uh, this article appeared on the website, and, uh, we didn't really know where it came from, and I asked, uh, the Board Office about it, and they said they had published it. And I didn't remember what it was, but, uh, it's kind of an editorial. I, I looked about, uh, tried to find out what it was about, and it was a, uh, email or a memo that came from, uh, a Mr. Butler, and then it was placed on the website. And I don't know, you know, why it was placed there or at the store. And I was just, it's out there. I don't believe it's appropriate, and I'm asking if the, the Board would see that it would be removed.
What is the process, and I'm asking because I don't know, what is the process for screening items posted to the website? Do they go through the Chair? Do they go through the Board Office?
That's my question.
Okay.
If I might have a question, I mean, how, who has the, who does IT allow the ability to post things to the website?
That's the question.
Should we be able to restrict that, uh, from IT's... I, I gave the post, I think most department heads are irregularly...
Mark.
I believe there's one person from each department, if I remember correctly what John...
I believe you're right.
...told me.
Yeah, I believe that is correct, uh, although, uh, Kyle Gates, who also serves as our IT person within our department out of Movel, is also eligible to do it, so, um, to the best of my knowledge, any of the department heads are basically responsible for what goes on their page.
And that responsibility really was handed over from IT, because they didn't think they had the manpower to update the websites. So, in an effort, I think, to keep a little more current, they, um, gave each elected official, you know, authority over, or responsibility over their own pages, um, and then whatever that official did within their, their realm was up to them, but...
At the time, they encouraged us to, uh...
Yeah, I mean, there was encourage, encouragement, and I'm pretty sure just probably Karen, you know that. Uh, people just, supervisors probably just come to you and ask you to put something on, and probably not very often, unless it's something out of a board meeting, usually, as far as a document or... Right, and I, I believe that, I believe that's probably true, exactly. This is, and who knows, this is over a year ago, so...
I think there ought to be some kind of a policy about, it's gotta be factual. I mean, it can't be in a editorial or an opinion. I would assume you would never do that.
No, typically what we post is our, the updated report that I give the Board weekly, once construction season starts to roll. Uh, Kyle put a tool on board that allows people to look up plant surveyors, et cetera, to look up section corners. Um, we might announce, uh, new foreman, for instance, in District 2. That was one of the things we put up that was out there. That's somebody that the public regularly interacts with, so those are the type of notices that typically we're putting on our webpage, so...
And this particular item is probably, you know, I guess we can argue the merits of it. There seems to be some facts in it and probably a response at that point in time that somebody thought we needed to make. Um, I'm not opposed to, you know, looking at the criteria for what goes on there, but, um, you know, we have to go forward. We can't second-guess what we did over a year ago.
Is this, is this what you're referring to?
Yes.
Can I say something? This was a response to something said that was not factual. What I did, I went and surveyed 13 counties, kept the facts presented to the Board, because this was during our budget process. This is not political or anything. This is through our budget process, explain why we couldn't do what people requested us to do. I did do 13 counties. There's one sheet that's missing on there, is the third sheet here, it shows the 13 counties right here. Uh, that did not get posted. When you look at the post, they delete the top part. I never post anything without going through the Chair on any Board. That is up to the Chair, what they want released to the public. I just don't go out and run and post something off, because I don't even know how to do it to begin with.
Sheriff's not in total agreement with this?
No, uh, that's why it was brought to my attention.
I, I think...
And I, Supervisor Smith said, we don't need to go back. I just, you know, when I read it, I didn't think it was appropriate. We can, we can all debate that.
Right.
Whether it's not, uh, you know, it goes to, we also have to consider free speech, you know. An elected official can, I can put out that stuff too, but, uh, I hope that we refrain from doing so.
I would hope you wouldn't do that on our website.
Yeah, and when, you know...
Get a Facebook account.
Well, there is a lot...
This brings up a very interesting...
Yeah.
Topic.
It does.
I've read many editorials from supervisors.
Not on our website?
No, not on our website.
That would be the point.
But, you know what, yours' truth is not somebody else's, apparently.
I, I agree with that.
And from the short time I've had this, what I've read in it is mostly facts. And if they're facts, I don't have a problem with it. If they're wrong facts...
Well, regardless, I think it's, I think it's outdated. I mean, I think we can remove it now.
Right.
Right, based on, it's old, and...
Right.
Right, yeah.
And in the future, I'm sure Dennis will work with the current Chair to, if anything, is to ever go on the website.
Well, and, and Dennis's defense, you are very careful, and always have been, in my opinion, on not getting out in front of any elected official. And you do take your direction from elected officials, and you're very conscious of that, so I am assuming that...
I'm under the impression you didn't put it on there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Take it off, because it's outdated, like Matthew said.
Mm-hmm.
And I never put it on there. I'd only put it on if the Chair or a Board member wanted, and I had no request.
The reason I'm bringing it to you is because, uh, I asked IT how it got there, and, uh, they told me how it got there, and they asked me if I wanted to remove, and I said, I don't have the authority to do that.
We have consensus to remove this?
Yes.
I, I think the Chair, it's been on for three months, apparently.
A year and three months. A year and three months.
It's been, it's been on over a year.
On there quite a while. It's not really updated.
I mean, that is part of the discussion. It's just what you just said, Supervisor Clausen, is that, you know, is the Chair the one that's going to make those decisions, or how does this work?
I think it should be as department heads are. Where you have one point of contact.
I agree with that.
One of the most difficult things in the world of IT is keeping websites up.
Yes.
It is a struggle.
That's why they, from the beginning, uh, with the website, is they would, absolutely did not want to be responsible for the content.
I certainly understand that.
Okay, thank you, sir. I would take... Any other comments? John, or Mark?
Who do we have, who's going to Washington, DC?
Matthew and David.
I was concerned about Quorum, I didn't know what we were gonna have there.
Is somebody else gone?
I, I don't know, that's why I asked.
I don't think so. All right, concern duly noted. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Let's all go home.